Tuesday, May 25. We are at 6 o'clock. We're continuing to be remote and I'm welcoming everybody who is joining our meeting tonight. I'm Mary Ashcroft, I'm Chair of the Board. We have with us Select Board Member John Paul Fagnon, Select Board Member Sharon Russell, Select Board Member Don Chaffee, and we hope that Select Board Member Joe Donardo will be joining us. We do have a couple of preliminary things before we get into the first part of the meeting. So just a reminder, the orders have all been prepared. Select Board members, please do come in and sign as soon as you can so checks can be cut and our vendors and employees paid. Select Board minutes, while we're waiting another minute or two, Select Board minutes for May 11th, we'll start with the Special Library Board Meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made by Sharon, seconded by JP. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Mary, Joe just joined.
Oh, good, thanks. Joe wasn't at that meeting anyway, so. Hi, Joe. Joe Donardo has joined. One more set of minutes for May 11th, our main Select Board Meeting at 6 o'clock. Is there any motion to approve the minutes as printed?
So moved to.
Okay, motion by Don, seconded by JP. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, very good. Okay. This is the time when we usually take comments from the floor and we do have quite a number of people here. We usually ask for people not otherwise on the agenda, but I believe most folks are joining us for Item B under New Business on our Agenda, which is the Board to Meet with Town Residents Requesting the Town Adopt a Declaration of Inclusion. So is there someone who wishes to speak to this? And that may be Steve Dardick.
Yes, Mary, thank you. I would like to speak to the Declaration. I'd like to make sure everyone knows the wording of the Declaration, so if you bear with me, I'd like to just read it. It says that Rutland Town condemns racism and discrimination of any type and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or disability, and will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. And as a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all of its forms and commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. Rutland Town has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions. So Rutland Town has been my home for 33 years. We built our home here in 1988 after living in the city of Rutland for 15 years. Our children went through Rutland Town Elementary School. My wife Judy and I worked our entire careers here. And recently, we purchased a plot in the Rutland Town Cemetery on Pinnacle Ridge Road. We're old enough to think about those things now. The values in the Declaration of Inclusion are our values: no racism, no discrimination, fair and equal treatment for everyone who wants to live and work in this town. And some people might say that we don't have those kinds of problems here. And in response to that, just serendipitously, there've been several articles in the Rutland Herald recently about this, and I'd like to mention one or two of them. This first article appeared in this past weekend's Rutland Herald. Campaign aims at LGBTQ visibility. And it states that Avery Proven said growing up gay in Rutland County was harder than most people realize. I faced these issues throughout school, being called different slurs, feeling like there wasn't space for me. And Proven, who now lives in New York City but grew up in Pittsburgh and Rutland Town, is one of the co-founders of All Our Welcome Here, an LGBTQ-focused diversity campaign involving the downtown Rutland Partnership Project Vision and other community organizations. Proven said, "I don't want younger people to go through what I had to go through. Queer youth are usually at risk for mental health and suicide." Avery Proven is from a multi-generational Pittsburgh family. He's a white Anglo-Saxon young man, handsome and athletic. And he experienced this in Rutland Town and Pittsburgh. A few weeks ago, there was a story in the Rutland Herald entitled Cash and a Sorry, sorry in quotes, for abuse. And the story in this case was about the town of Bennington, which agreed to pay the family of a black former state lawmaker $137,000 and to issue a public apology about complaints that the Bennington Police Department didn't adequately investigate her complaints about online and racially motivated harassment. This legislator had to resign from the state legislature and she and her family left Bennington. Lastly, as an example, a case that John Paul is familiar with, and I won't dwell on this. A few years ago, not too many, Rutland City had a police officer named Andrew Todd, who John Paul represented in a lawsuit claiming that racism, racial profiling, and cover-ups made his job unbearable, forcing him to resign. And with John Paul's expertise, he secured a very handsome settlement. So the problems are here. Some of them are overt, some of them are hidden, but whether it's sexual orientation, racism, disability, old age, and other problems, they're all addressed by this Declaration of Inclusion. The Declaration makes equal and fair treatment town policy. It sends a message to our police, our fire department, our municipal workers, our economic development people, everyone who wants to live and work here, that they'll be treated equally. This isn't controversial. Many cities and towns, in fact, all to, with one minor exception to my knowledge, that have considered this resolution, have adopted it. Rutland City recently adopted it unanimously. Liberals and conservatives, all 11 of them, voted for it. The Rutland Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Unit supports it. Rutland Young Professionals supports it. The towns of Pittsburgh, Brandon, and Pittsfield in Rutland County have voted to support it and have adopted it. Other towns in Vermont, Middlebury, Mooretown, Waterbury, and Franklin, and others, have all approved it. So I'll conclude here, because there are other people who may want to address this, but I'd say to the Board members, you should support this resolution unanimously. There should not be any dissent. It's the right thing to do and it's the smart business thing to do. And I thank you for hearing me. And you, whoever wishes to speak.
Thank you, Steve. Marcia, you have your.
Yes.
Hand up, so go ahead.
Thank you, Steve, for that apt introduction to what we want to do tonight. I would say to anyone on the Board who feels that we don't need to endorse this Declaration because it goes without saying that we feel this way. I would say, we don't leave the things that we value to be left unsaid. And that would be why it's important to not leave it unsaid.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. Would anyone else like to be heard? Steve Schindler. I'm sorry. John, you're next, after Steve Schindler, okay?
Go ahead, John. No, you want me to speak? I'll speak. So I'll keep this short. I want to relay a story, an experience of mine here in town that was really disturbing. I've been playing pickup soccer for fun down on the polo fields for probably 25 years. And a couple of years ago, we had a game going on, 20 people out just having fun, other teams practicing at the field. And at that time, we had six or eight dark-skinned guys coming and playing with us. Soccer's an international sport, so we tend to get quite a lot of that, which is great, in my opinion, all over the world. These guys have been coming and playing with us pretty routinely. I got to know them fairly well, at least as players. And on this particular night, three or four of them had their young sons with them, adolescents, 12 to 15 kind of thing. And we were just having a really nice game, playing the field right by the road. Most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the polo fields. And out of the blue, somebody drove by, white guy in an old pickup truck with his window down, and yelled at the top of his lungs a racial epithet, the N-word, and we all just stopped and were shocked. And I thought, how dare you? I mean, I was really upset, but it really brought home for me that skin color matters. And there are people out there who are biased against people who they've never met just because of the color of their skin, which is something they can't change. And I was really disturbed by it. I just want to relay the story that, yeah, racism is here in bucolic, beautiful Rutland Town. And it was bad, I felt really bad for the guys I knew. I thought, gosh, man, I just can't believe it. And the audacity of it was really disturbing, too. But what really, really bothered me probably more than anything was seeing those kids. And knowing that they have to, you know, it's not the same growing up with dark skin as it is with light, it's just not. And that's, you know, being an adolescent's hard enough. Dealing with that was really troubling. So I just wanted to relay that I support the Declaration. I think it's a good thing. I think we can feel good about it. I would be curious to hear if anybody who has misgivings about it. I suppose everybody's entitled to their view and I welcome hearing. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Steve. There is some feedback going on. Could you please mute if you are not called on to speak? Okay, I think John LaCarter, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mary. My wife Diane and I just want to say that we support the Declaration for all the reasons given, for the excellent presentation by Steve, and we hope that the Board will do so unanimously.
Thank you, John. Are there any other? Matt Getty, your hand is up electronically.
I knew you would get that Zoom technology, Mary, you're a pro now. I would just add, in addition to what's already been said, that I really appreciate the way that the Declaration was drafted. There's no question that folks in the community will debate about particular issues and may not agree on everything, but I think if we can all agree on what the goal is, as to the type of community that we want to foster and create, that that's the first step, you know? So if we can agree on the general principles in this Declaration, then, you know, when particular controversies arise from time to time, as they will, you know, we can debate those in a context of, you know, understanding that an inclusive community is what we're trying to create in Rutland Town. And we may not always agree on how to get there, but, you know, if we will at least agree on those, on that baseline principle. So that's all.
Thank you, Matt. Any other hands? Okay, it's Peg.
Thank you. John Peg Kraus, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I've lived in Rutland Town, we've lived here for how many years?
Famous Steve Dardick. 1988 we moved.
For a long, long time. And while I've involved in community activities for many of those years, I've never felt anything happening in Rutland Town that was important enough to warrant us, other than all the activities supporting our kids, of course, but in terms of the politics, to really get involved. And maybe it only happens every 40 years or so, but for me, this is one of those events. It would have been easy to, I was in New York State today, I came home early because I thought it was important just to make a statement saying how important this statement is for our community, for the larger community here in Vermont as well. We only get an opportunity to act on these sorts of things once in a lifetime. The statement that has been crafted, I think, is eminently reasonable. It's hard to find anything controversial or provocative about it. It states some very simple, basic truths about life and the value of human life. And Peg and I would really encourage all of our elected officials to support it, and we hope unanimously. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe and Peg. Are there any other people on the call who would like to be heard? You can raise your hand. Karen Prescott. My, it's been a long time. Hi, Karen.
There we go. Hi, Mary, how are you? I just wanted to speak as somebody who has worked in school systems for over three decades, including Rutland Town, that inclusivity is so important. We don't always see what kids see and hear, but it's real, it's there every day. I watch what's going on at the high school and the mascot, that's a whole nother story, but that just goes to show that it's there and we're not always aware of what's happening, but the kids are. And it's our job in the town to protect those kids. I always viewed it as my responsibility as a former educator and administrator and as a community member. We need to support them because they don't always know what to do about it. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Looking around. All right. Is there any member of the Select Board who might wish to make a motion?
Yes, I do, Mary. I'd like to ask you, Madam Chair, whether you feel it would be appropriate to make a motion and have discussion, or would you allow me to preface my motion with my remarks as to why I make motion?
Either way is fine, Don.
Okay. Excuse me. This is tough, tough for me. And the reason it's tough is because I'm looking, I'm looking over the, I'm looking over the really, really good attendance that we have. And I'm looking over some really, really good people that I've known for a long time. And I want all of you to know that I respect all of you individually, and you know I do. So none of my remarks that I'm making are made in a personal fashion at all. But I've heard, and I heard your stories, and I agree with just about everything that I've heard you say, except the instances of, the very few instances that I've heard of any kind of need for this have not been given by somebody in a pickup truck that we don't know whether he was from East Overshue or Chittenden or wherever. And I decry those remarks as well, but I'm not thinking that might have been a Rutland Town person. But I've heard no accusations nor any citation of any instances of racism or discrimination of any type, including but not limited to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or disability in the town of Rutland by any governing body, or its agencies, or its departments. And if I'm wrong, I sincerely ask anyone to correct me. And as many of you have stated, I've lived in Rutland Town since 1970. And I've participated in its governance since that time. That's 51 years. And I've never seen any offense that would necessitate such a resolution. It seems to me, no matter how well-intentioned, and I do not disagree one bit with the good intentions that you have, that what we have here is a resolution in search of a crime, when no one has identified such a crime in all the decades during which Rutland Town has existed. The very title of this resolution, Declaration of Inclusion, implies that there is some guilt of exclusion on the part of our town because the resolution asked the town to adopt it. And that's simply not true. There are many reasons why this is true, not the least of which is the fact that our governing boards, including the five members that you have in front of you right now, are comprised of decent, honest, and fair-minded people. But the most important reason may be found in our legal obligation. Upon accepting the privilege of governing this town, which you have given us through the elective process, we all, each one of us, individually, take the following two oaths, and with your permission, Madam Chair, I will quote the Vermont Oath of Allegiance: "I, Donald Chaffee, do solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont and that I will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or the government thereof. So help me God, under pains and penalty of perjury." The second oath is the Oath of Office. "I, Donald Chaffee, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Select Board Member or Justice of the Peace in the State of Vermont and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of my judgment and ability according to law. So help me God, under the pains and penalties of perjury." And let me allude to this a little bit more, because in the Vermont Statutes Title 13, Chapter 65, under Section 2904. "A person of whom an oath is required by law who willfully swears falsely in regard to any matter or thing respecting which such oath is required shall be guilty of perjury and punished as provided in Section 2901 of this title, which says, 'That calls for anyone who commits perjury shall be, shall be imprisoned not more than 15 years, fined not more than $10,000 or both.'" I might also add that the Vermont Constitution, which by this oath we have pledged to uphold and follow, embodies each of the protections mentioned in your resolution. In fact, in fact, in May of 2007, Vermont became the third state in New England to explicitly prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity. And I think that's a pretty special thing, in my humble opinion, for the state of Vermont. Now, on October 29, 1966, I took a vow, which I consider akin to an oath, to love, honor, and respect a woman who would become my wife. Till death do we part. That's an oath of some duration, now 55 years. Mostly in harmony, I take oaths very seriously. And in consideration of all the preceding information, I'd like to summarize as follows very briefly. First, it seems that the resolution has no purpose, as it declares inclusion, when there's no cause of any exclusion shown on the part of the town of Rutland or any of its agents, elected officials, or departments. Two, it lacks any legal standing, as it has no enforcement provision. Three, it's grossly subservient to the required legally binding oath of allegiance of office, which has the power and the pain of perjury for violation. Thus, really, it's in violation of the supremacy clause because the oath supersedes it. And for all these reasons above, I would respectfully make the motion to object to the consideration of the resolution at this time. And that would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Your motion is to object to consideration? Does that mean you're requesting that it be tabled or that it be voted down? I'm not clear.
It's just objecting to the consideration. That's a legal motion under Roberts rules, and it means that we're just not considering it. You can say that it be received and filed for reference or something to that effect, but not considered.
So as you're presenting it as a motion, a motion requires a second? Is there a second?
So I'd like to speak to the motion. Well, you can't speak unless we have a second, I guess, I think. I don't, you know.
Well, Don, let me do this. Thank you. Okay. Don, we let you speak without coming to your motion, so JP, if you want to speak to the motion?
First off, Don, you mentioned that if you were incorrect in anything that you said, you wanted to be corrected. And so I will take this opportunity to remind you that you yourself have used the N-word in a police committee meeting. So for you to sit there and say that there are no incidents or events of racism occurring, you're kind of ignoring what's right in front of you. Now, as to the concept of this prospect, I remember, and I'm always a little troubled when people I respect, well-educated people, come in and say, "This is our view of things and we really can't conceive of any reason why you would disagree with us, so we request that you all agree with us in harmony." Now, I don't know how many of you said that tonight, but we, this Board, have been faced with requests that we take similar action by far more people than have spoken tonight, by far more people that are present here. And that event, and this has happened a couple of times in the time that I've been on the Board, but the most recent event was a petition presented to the Board with over 275 signatures requesting that we oppose any Syrian refugee settlement in Rutland Town. And I stood at that time explaining my position, that I am a student of government, I am a libertarian, and I don't see that this is the business of your town government to be endorsing one current thought over another current thought. It's our business to run the nuts and bolts of this town government and to do so as cheaply as we can. If we allow petitions like this, then we open the floodgates and they'll be petitioning us for every single thing, no GMOs in food. They'll be, if this is just not a place, in my view, from where I come from, which is that government should be as little as possible, and when I say little, I mean tiny in terms of interfering with people's lives. And having said that, I am particularly sensitive to the concept of racism in Rutland And having said that, I am particularly sensitive to the concept of racism in Rutland City and in Rutland County, a place where I was born, and I'm very happy to spend my life living here. But we will never be coming together as a group if we're going to be having different concepts put in front of a local board who's only trying to get your highways paved and your tipping fee at the garage as low as possible. And if we're going to get sidetracked, we are forgetting what our purpose is. If you look at the definition of what municipal government is supposed to be, simply the most simple needs of the people. As far as the principles that are announced in this proclamation, they are embodied in the very nature of almost every legal case that's ever considered them. They are so well-established. But for you folks to come in tonight and say that this is our job as government, and if we don't do this, if we don't disagree with you, somehow we're not in unison with the concepts that we all subscribe to through other documents, it's a little unfair, especially because my objection is procedural. This is not what we're supposed to be doing as a local government. And we, this board has voted now, this will be the third time that a petition has come before the board, and I've argued my case. And I think that people understand that that's neither a yea or nay. The Syrian refugee thing, much more people, but again, the board voted, we're not going to get involved in these concepts of this is a principle we want to endorse, and this is a principle we want to endorse, because it's just not what we're here for. So I would, I guess I would second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other select board members who wish to be heard on this?
Yeah, Mary, I would. You know, I read that, and I supported it because I support equal of everybody, but after hearing some of the things that John said, I, you folks told your story, so I'd like to tell mine. I grew up sharing Garifano. I was a little Italian girl from down in what some people referred to us as the Gut or Happy Valley. One day, I was at school, and somebody called me a little black guinea. And I thought, what? What do they say? So I went home to my father, and I said, "Why would somebody call me a little black guinea?" So he went on to tell me the story of Rutland and how it was kind of divided, the Irish on the hill and the Italians in Happy Valley, where some referred to as the Gut. So, and then I, without bringing up names, my first marriage, my mother-in-law said to me, "My father would roll over in his grave if he knew my kid was marrying a black guinea." So I do know those feelings, and I run the Open Door Mission, and I get all kinds of people, gay, straight, black, white, yellow, green. But I think, I honor those people that came in to talk to us, but I also feel that we can write all kinds of statements we want to write, but unless you act that way, unless you believe that all people are equal, no statement's going to change anything. So from this little black guinea who's damn proud to be one, I would have to agree with Don and John, and when I first came to this, I was going to 100% support it, but labels are for cans, not for people, and I feel this is another labeling. So that's my answer.
All right. Joe DiNardo, is there anything you wish to be, to say?
Only that I don't think that we have to, we should not have to make a declaration publicly or whatever as to how we treat people in Rutland Town. And my concern, I guess, goes right along with John Paul and Don and Sharon, is that if we vote on this and we agree to it, then the other side can show up with a similar thing, and we're going to just be going back and forth. And I like the idea of running the town and not trying to get into some of the social and some of the other things that are there. We run our town on a fair and honest basis, and until we don't, I don't think we have a problem, and I don't think we need to make it a big show as to how we run our town. I think we do a good job, and, you know, I share the same ethnicity as Sharon, and I didn't have some of those problems, but I know exactly what she's talking about. So I think that, you know, we're, this is, this is an answer looking, looking for a problem that doesn't exist, or at least not in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. So we've heard from the select board, except for me, and I will remark that I'm sitting here looking at a copy of our letterhead, Town of Rutland Select Board Letterhead, and on it, it has a seal, and our town was incorporated September 7, 1761. And last year, in 2020, was the first time that a woman was elected as chair of the select board. So is there some history of discrimination? You tell me. I'm going to vote no on this motion because I think that it is appropriately brought before us by the townspeople, and we deserve to affirm the values of our town. So if there's no further discussion, I will call the question.
Oh, Mary, 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 one more piece.
You have been heard, Don.
Yes, I just, I'd like to, I'd just like to comment on John Paul's first comments because I don't recall the instance that he was talking about, and I'm sure that he can refresh me at a later date. I don't know what context, I don't recall, I don't recall saying that because I don't believe that I would say it publicly, and I don't know what context, if it was said, what context it was said in, because I have made statements before about what other people have said in terms of using that particular term. But that's one of the things that really irritates me in society is that you can't use that term that he's talking about in any context whatsoever, even if it's to define it or to talk about whether it's in a book or whether it's in a quote or anything else. Apparently, the only ones that can use that, that term, that name, the only ones that can use it are the people that, the people that it refers to, they can use it freely, and there's no problem. And obviously, context is important. I have shown absolutely no animosity towards any race, creed, or color in any office that I've ever held in this town. I have friends, I respect our planning commission members, every single one of them. So in any case, you could let me know, JP, at some point. Personally, I would certainly like to engage in a conversation with you about that. And thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Any other select board member wish to be heard? I think we've covered us all, all right? The motion is to not consider this resolution. Am I correctly stating it? The motion's been made and seconded not to consider the resolution?
At this time, that's, that was the exact wording of my motion.
At this time. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I heard everybody but Joe.
Aye.
I will vote no. So the motion to not consider passes on a four-to-one vote. Okay. Thank you all very much for your participation. I do hope that you will stay for the rest of the meeting. I'm sure there will be other riveting things on our agenda, and very much appreciate you coming in to speak with us this evening. Next item on the agenda, sort of taking out of order, I know Doug Best is on. Is he still on?
Yes, Mary, I'm still here.
Okay, good, Doug, thank you. So this is new business item A. We're going to move to Doug Best. This is the Velco Post Road project.
Thanks, Mary. So Velco has a project where we're going to be upgrading our North Rutland substation on the Post Road, and we filed our advanced 45-day notice back on May 3, and we're now out meeting with the town select board, the planning commissions, and public meeting just to get public input on the project.
If you don't eat this taco, you're going to bed.
Okay.
So anyways, Mary, am I able to present a drawing that was provided with our 45-day notice?
The select board has received the notice, and there was a drawing in that, so I can refer them. I don't know if Bill can post it.
Doug, you can share your screen if you'd like to.
Okay.
All right. Let me see if I can do that, Bill. Are you able to see that?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. All right, so I guess just to orient folks, you know, this is the Post Road here, Route 7.
Doug, excuse me for a minute. Two of our members are calling in, so you might want to give a little more description as to what you're describing, okay?
Sure. So the North Rutland Substation is just east of the intersection of the Post Road and Route 7. Most of you probably drive by it on a regular basis, and it's a shared facility that we have with Green Mountain Power. And our project is to perform some improvements at the substation, which is going to require us to expand the fence. We're going to install a new control building and relocate the existing equipment inside the station. Also, we're going to require to do some tree clearing in order to expand the fence, but we are proposing to install some aesthetic plantings, you know, after the construction project is over. The project is, you know, based upon a condition assessment we did at the station. It was originally built in 1958, so, you know, some of the equipment that we are replacing has been there for quite a few years, particularly the control building. So that's, that's it at a high level. We're looking to do our filing coming up here in late June, early July, our 248 filing. And assuming we get our CPG from the Public Utility Commission, we're looking to start construction in February of 2022, with the hope of completing construction by the end of 2022. So if anybody has any particular questions, you know, throw them out there, and we'll see if we can answer them.
We saw some of this information when the subdivision permit came before the planning commission, so it's a little bit familiar to us.
Right. For those of you who were on the planning commission, we went through a subdivision, we bought approximately 32 acres of land from the Thomas family, and that was mainly so that our existing property line, we're kind of on a postage stamp today. So purchasing that property gave us the opportunity to expand the substation yard, but also provides us some buffer for the future.
Doug, Don Chaffee here, do you have an estimated cost of the improvements or budgeted cost for the improvements?
Right now, Don, it's around, probably around $14 million, but it'll probably come in less than that, but those are preliminary numbers.
Thank you.
Other questions from the select board members? Any other town department heads have any questions?
Yeah, Mary, I do.
Byron.
You, in a previous proposal, Doug, you had indicated facilities, bathroom facilities, that sort of thing. Are you going to be doing onsite waste, or are you going to be requesting an allocation from the town to connect to town sewer?
Right now, we are pursuing to connect to the town sewer.
Do you know how much allocation at this point that you will be asking for?
It's Andy McMillan's on here, but it's a small amount. It's one bathroom, I mean, I think we, there's like two people daily or something like that, it's a very small amount.
Yeah, we've gone with 60 gallons per day in the past, but it's less.
I mean, this is not an occupied building. We could go, you may go in an entire month and no one's inside the building other than to perform an inspection. I think you said it was, what, Andy, 60 gallons per day, which is a pretty conservative number.
Yep, that's correct.
I was contacted by an engineer today to requesting some information about town sewer in that, in that area, and I will get back to them on Friday.
Okay.
Any other questions from department heads or from the select board? Or for that matter, is anyone else participating that wishes to be, to have questions or address Okay, I think that's it, Doug. So thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate the heads up and the good communication here.
Okay, and we'll probably be reaching out to you at some point, hopefully for a letter of support on our project that we might be able to include in our 248 filing.
Okay. All right, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, one other thing back up to the top of the agenda. This is also a time when we take questions or public comment from the floor for folks who were not otherwise heard on the issues that have come before us so far. Anything not on the agenda that somebody wishes to question or comment on? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll proceed with our usual agenda then. We'll start with Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board. What have you got for us, Bill?
Good evening. Not a whole lot for the packet. We've covered a few things, and we will get to them as we go along. So number one is our updated meeting schedule and the committee agenda items, and just so everybody knows, a police committee meeting has been warned for Thursday afternoon at 4:30, and the warnings have, is posted, and we'll send out to everybody to participate. Number two, we've already handled. Number three is a request from the listeners, that's under new business. Number four is the summary for the safety grant, that's also under new business. That's all for the packet items. Sent out in email, we had a couple items, one from Byron for the bike pet grant and information on the Post Road sidewalk, and he'll cover that. Carrie sent out budget status sheets and a letter from a town resident. Jamie Sherwood was included in that late edition as well. So there's, that is everything that I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any questions of Bill Sweet, our Town Administrative Assistant? Okay. Thank you, Bill. Any questions of Bill Sweet, our Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board? Bill reminds me that when you come in to sign the orders, bills, and warrants and the other documents, there is a liquor license rejection that we voted on last meeting, and you need to sign in the disapproved section of that. So I was the only one who signed there. If you folks would please remember that when you come in, it will be with the rest of the documents to sign. All right. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening, Carrie.
Hi, Mary. Hi, everyone. Let's see, I have a brief couple of things. We are now done with our fiscal year for our tax installment. And today I handed over our taxes that have yet to be paid to our delinquent tax collector. So from here on out, if there are any questions on tax payments, you certainly can call my office, but I will most likely refer you to our delinquent tax collector who takes care of the payments from here on out. Good news, however, we do have about 98% of our entire year given to the town for our property taxes. So way to go Rutland Town. We appreciate it and thank you. So I wanted to report that out. And then also, a very, very quick update. I did have a third member in my office for about a month and a half. She is no longer needed at this point. We do miss her a lot, but Friday, Mary, it was her last day. She graciously helped me in the office so that land records could get caught up, and I'm happy to report that they are all caught up. And I have some interesting numbers very quickly for just kind of to show and to prove that COVID and the real estate transfers and buying and selling of real estate was a tremendous increase during that time. Meaning, I did some quick calculations, and per month on average, in my 14 months during this COVID time, I have recorded around 354 pages per month. And previously, going back to as far as 2014, on average, the clerks would do around 220 pages per month. So you can see the increase from 220 to 354 that I had to deal with. So they're all caught up, and it was some interesting numbers to look at.
Thank you, Carrie, very much for doing that. That's much appreciated.
Yep, no problem. So that's pretty much what I have as far as for tonight. I did give you the budget status report, just reminding all department heads that we have just a couple of weeks left in the fiscal year. Everything seems to be looking good from my standpoint. Just keep an eye on everything as you move forward in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any questions of Select Board members for the Town Clerk and Treasurer? Doesn't look, I had two. One is, it looks like you had a bump up in revenue due to all of the filings by, what, about $7,000?
I mean, perhaps. I mean, that certainly would make sense.
Yeah, okay. And then a question on the 1% tax. Is that, it looks like it's down from projection, but I'm guessing there's a missing installment. Am I right on that?
Perhaps. We are still on target as far as what I have received and statements that I've received. So it could just not be reflected in the general ledger. And that is just us doing our checkbook accounts that we are working on.
So do we get another installment that isn't reflected here?
I'll have to check on that for you.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. Anything else for Carrie? All right. Thank you very much. And Mary Dahlien was of great service. She's a former town clerk in Proctor, and she stepped in and really helped out greatly. So our thanks go to her, too.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay, Barbara Nois, Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Yes, hi. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Barbara.
Yeah, with the Pocket Park and the grant, some pretty good news from V-Trans about the right-of-way. You may remember that we're considering maybe a boat launch and some trails and signs in the right-of-way along Business Route 4. So it looks like a matter of just permits for the signs and even to move them and to add a new one if we want to, that, you know, advertises the Pocket Park. There will be some state restrictions on the size of that sign. And, but, you know, it's, as long as the access to those trails and that boat launch are off Simons Avenue and not Business Route 4, there should be no issue with that kind of use, the trails and the boat launch on the right-of-way or in the right-of-way, is what I've been told. I'm hoping that is going to be the case going forward. We're still working on the portage in Proctor, still looking. I've got the recreational group of stakeholders looking at some options there. We can't go all the way to Proctor. And the Regional Planning Commission is working on a map for that group to finalize and come up with their list. And still to come is the Historic Stakeholders Group and their meeting. We've got a good group together, a couple people from State Historic Preservation. We've got Proctor Marble, going to be represented in GMP. Several groups that can speak to the history of that being a mill and an industrial area, and of course, the Revolutionary War era folks are one big part of that group. Now, we put out a bid and for a survey, and I'm not sure what the procedure is for looking at.
I have those. I have those. One request first on the meeting, the stakeholders meeting, would you please be sure you include the Simons Avenue folks?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I have here, we have received two sets of bids. You'll remember that we did the bid in two parts. We asked each bidder to give a bid for survey only of the boundary lines, and the other was to do the survey of boundary lines plus natural features and physical structures. We weren't sure how far our grant would reach. Now, I will say that the bid specs required the bids to be placed in a sealed envelope and marked out on the outside Pocket Park Survey Bid to be received by noon time on May 21. And the bids are to be open tonight at this meeting, and I have them here. One of the bidders provided, Bill tells me by email, a bid by email. It was not mailed, and it was not sealed. Bill received it, stamped it in. It was timely. It was received May 21 at 9:56 a.m., but it was not sealed. So the other is, and that was from TDAH Surveying and Design. I don't know what is the feeling of the Select Board, whether we accept that or reject it, or what we do with it. The second is the survey bid from MSK Engineers, and I'm going to open that now. There's two envelopes. One is the survey only, and I'll start with that. MSK Engineers, and these folks are out of Bennington and Montillier. And boundary-only survey not to exceed $4,385. And then MSK Engineers for the Boundary Survey with Natural Features and Physical Structure Survey, $5,570. So those two, and what's your pleasure with the TDAH survey, the two bids that were sent to us without being enclosed under seal? Any Select Board member wish to weigh in on this?
I don't know how critical is it, Mary. I mean, I realize it's a technicality, but the reason that they're sealed is so they can't be tampered with. And I'm just wondering whether we have a secure email system, and are the bids, in fact, the real bids of the people that sent them? I'd like to know what the bids are, in any case.
Of course you would. I mean, that was sort of my feeling, too. What, let's hear from the rest of the Select Board. Do we consider these bids or no?
Were they supposed to have come in by mail, not by, you know, by snail mail, not by email, is my question?
It doesn't say. It says bid shall be placed in a sealed envelope and marked on the outside Pocket Park Survey Bid to be received by noon on May 21.
So they weren't putting an envelope and sealed? So.
That's, that's correct.
It didn't meet, it didn't meet the criteria. I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
Mary?
Byron.
I don't have any objection. I don't have any objection to receiving the bid. I don't know what the other board members feel, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what their bid is.
Byron, I'm sorry, you were going to say something?
Yeah. In any of the bids in recent, last couple of years, I have included in the specifications that bids would be accepted by email, but they must be in PDF form and in an uneditable manner. And I haven't had any problems or issues with those. In fact, in fact, email is becoming more and more of a useful item for those things. So I don't know what the specifications included in the bid, whether, you know, emailed bids were accepted or not.
They were. They were. I used, I used your wording, Byron. Non-editable, editable and format PDF preferred.
Okay. All right.
Mary, Mary, the bid, excuse me. Go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Joey.
Okay, I didn't want to walk on anybody. So were these bids sent by email, or did they come by regular mail and just weren't sealed, or did they hand them, drop them off in person?
No, Bill tells me they were emailed to him.
Yeah, they were. It was, it wasn't PDF. It wasn't non-editable, but it was in PDF. And there was a very low probability there was any issue with the delivery of it to us. So I don't, I don't have any issue with the integrity of their bid.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Then we should accept them and move forward, I guess.
So if, it sounds like the board agrees, we should accept it. I will, the first bid for survey-only, Boundary Survey Only, TDAH Surveyors, the fixed fee cost of $7,200 inclusive of expenses. And the second bid is for Boundary Natural Features, Physical Structures, and that bid is for $11,600 inclusive of expenses. I, in this quick review, I can't tell you whether they're exactly comparable, or of course, whether they meet the criteria that was sent out. So what's your pleasure with this? Shall we send it to the Planning Commission? Or is there a motion from the Planning Commission to compare? Or is there a motion to accept one or the other? And which one to accept?
I would move, Mary, that we send those to the Planning Commission since they asked for the bid and let them to review them and come back to the board with the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, so motions made and seconded to send these for review to the Planning Commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. They're in the pink envelope, or the folder, Bill.
Can I get a clarification there? Which Planning Commission? Because the Regional Planning Commission sent those out. Is that, is that who you mean?
I guess that would be.
Okay.
Whoever sent out the request for proposal or bid should be the one, because they will have what their intent was and what they were asking for, and they'll be the best ones to make a recommendation to us.
Okay, so this is for, so it'd be the Regional Planning Commission and not necessarily vote by the whole. No, we don't want to vote. We just want to review. Okay, gotcha.
Review and a recommendation. Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion to send to the Regional Commission for review, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'm opposed. I'm opposed to that, Mary.
Okay, Don's opposed.
And I'd like to explain that. I just, I'm unsure of why we would have the Regional Commission of making a judgment on a bid for something that our town is doing, and our Planning Commission is the one that has made the proposal. I thought, when we made the, when you made the original suggestion, I thought it was our Planning Commission you were talking about. Barbara, you, you developed the specs, didn't you?
Through the Regional Planning Commission. We submitted the grant application for the town, and we're, we're helping to administer that grant.
So it's the Regional Commission's grant application?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand. I'll change my vote, then. I'll vote aye.
Okay. So next, anything else, Barbara?
Just, just really quickly, we're continuing to work on the airstrip and the helipad ordinance on the details of that. Should we run that by the town attorney before we have you take a look at it, or vice versa?
Well, my suggestion would be that you bring it in so we can see what's involved. And also, we'll listen to the recommendation of the Planning Commission on it, and then at that point, we'll decide whether it needs review by Town Council. So let the Select Board see it first.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Barbara Nois, Pulling, and the Planning Commission? If not, thank you, Barbara.
Sure.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Hello, all. How are you?
Hi, Mike.
Enjoying our lovely weather. Things are progressing nicely. We're going to turn over the pool on Friday to get it up and running for the season, so that.
Oh, you just froze, Mike.
They forgot about three minutes out of it. A minute out of it.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
Boy, that's a heck of an improvement, really.
He's talking to himself now.
Okay, did you, Bill, did you send him an email? Or a text? Okay, let's hold on Mike and go down to Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
I think he's back. I think he's back, Mary.
I never left.
You froze.
Can you hear me now? Are we good?
Yeah.
Nope, it was my good sign that froze. Bill, I know you're up to this, so you just, you might as well just admit you're the one doing this to me. All right, so I'll go quick. Everything is going well. Mowing and all that is fantastic. I did ask by committee members what their, they would like to do as far as our town residents and having them pay this year or continued what we did last year. So Sharon or Joe, if you want to add to that, I'm just wondering what the board's pleasure is moving forward.
I can, I, you know, my feeling is we, if we, and, and that's up to the full board, but it's been a rough year for all kinds of people and I don't think it would hurt us to do a freebie again this year just for town residents. You know, it may help a few of them that haven't been working and I think, you know, it's not going to hurt the pool and recreation. So what do you think, Joe?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. People have really, I, you know, there's a lot going on and I know a little relief spread around. I think it'd be fine. I don't have a problem with it. Was there a part two to that, Mike? I forgot.
Yeah, well, part two, basically, so if you're a non-resident, you would pay your normal fee. You would pay your daily fees. Residents, if they were going to do swim lessons, but we're reducing our swim lessons to five participants per lesson. So that'll limit, that'll take the kids from 60 in the pool to 30 in the pool during swim lesson time. And if you are a resident and you want to do swim lessons, then you will pay the, the fee, the normal family pass fee, which is $60 to make it fair with the people that are purchasing. If they're from out of town, purchasing a pool pass, which we have a large majority that do do that. I don't think we can segregate. So that was the part two to it.
Okay. So motion by Sharon, seconded by Joe? To charge no fee for town residents, but to do the pool pass as just explained by Mike.
Correct.
Okay.
For the last, yes.
That would be for the lessons.
For the lessons. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mike, yeah, go ahead.
One last thing, if you want to check out the little kids playing baseball, it's pretty awesome. Bill has done a good job. It's on our website. I encourage you to go check out a game. There are lots of kids participating, following all the guidelines and they're having a great time. Surprise, surprise. So thank you to all that have been helping out. And our pool signup days are next week on Wednesday and Thursday at the pool, but all that information is on the website. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mike Rowe. And if there's no other questions or comments, Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening. Just a few things to mention to you tonight. I've been off a few days this week. I will be off a few days next week. That will conclude my use of vacation time. I did get some good news in an email yesterday. The Better Backroads Grant that we had applied for, for funding on the Gleason Road Culvert project. We were approved for that. So that will save us a probably in the neighborhood of about $40,000 off, off the cost of that project.
Good, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah. For the grant application for the post-road sidewalk, I will need a letter of support and commitment from the selectman to include with that packet. There's also a, in, as a separate part of that application, a signature page, which is the page that contains your name, address, you know, Dun's number, those kinds of things. I will leave that at the town office on Friday. If someone or if the board would authorize Mary or Bill or somebody to sign that, that would be great. And then we could get that grant application in the next week.
And the letter of support, have you drafted that or?
No, I did not. I didn't, I didn't know how, if the board was going to continue with supporting that or not. So I left that to the, to the board to draft. It's just a, a simple letter expressing your support for the project and make sure that you mentioned that you're committed to maintaining the project after it's constructed.
Yep, okay. Okay, what's your pleasure? I'll entertain a motion from a select board member.
Don't move.
So Sharon's moving to.
Do we need two? Two motions or one motion?
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. Is this both for the letter of support and for the application being approved by the select board to be signed by me for the select board?
Correct, both of them, yep.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Mary, will you draft that letter with Bill or will you have Bill do it?
Well, I'm, I had a couple of ideas, so I will, I will draft it with Bill.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely fine. I'm not a good letter writer.
Yeah, well, I think because of the, the discussion we had last time, we, there's still recognition that even though the school kids may use a different path, the people in the neighborhood may well use this sidewalk. So, and at least part of the sidewalk's going to be needed anyway. Okay. Anything else Byron?
Yeah, has anyone found the, the signed the contract for mend and trucking? That Gleason Road Culvert work? It was in the town office and I went to pick it up. I mentioned it at the last board meeting. I went to pick it up and it wasn't there.
And you know what? Bill asked me about that. I didn't go through my stack of stuff. So could you run off another one, Bill?
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
I, I, I think I found the guilty party.
Really?
Yeah, I do. I have it. By, by mistake. I think I grabbed it with some other stuff and I will drop that off tomorrow. It, it, I think it was with some stuff Bill left for me and I didn't realize I was supposed to just sign it and I think I walked home with it.
Okay. I'm usually the culprit, which is why I've, you know, I'd already thrown myself in front of the bus, so.
No, no, I'm the guilty party at this time.
I'm okay.
Yep.
And then one other thing in regards to sewer. Mark from Graphic Edge called me today. Was hoping that they would, would be able to do something about eliminating their stormwater discharge from the town's sanitary sewer. He was wondering if the town would be able to do something about giving them access to some type of manhole somewhere involved with stormwater. I think that needs to go to the water sewer committee or something and, and discuss that a little further. He was also wondering if, if the town was going to reclaim or take back some of the allocation because apparently the allocation for that business is more than what they're currently using. If that's the case, does the town buy that allocation back or do we just take it? So there again, I said, I didn't have an answer for them. I needed to run that by a few other people and probably the water sewer committee could probably come up with an answer for that.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good one to send to water and sewer.
Other than that, that's all I have. Unless there's questions from the floor.
I have one question Byron.
Yeah.
Um, what, when do you propose to be working on McKinley Avenue? When, when is like the, that road is going to be ground, right? And then repaved?
That's correct.
Do you have a rough idea what your schedule is going to be there?
I have no idea at this point. I talked with Fuller last week and they've, they've had some breakdowns and issues. So they're a little behind. Originally, he was talking at the end of May, moving into town. And now at this point, there was nothing scheduled for this week. So he probably, I will talk with them again next Monday and find out if they're going to be moving into town. As soon as I know something, Joe, I can let you know.
Okay, it's, this is personal, not necessarily town business, because we want to get started here and, and that's where we're going to start McKinley Avenue. So I didn't know if I'd be in and out with them, but we'll, we'll, you just let me know, then I'll try to arrange my schedule not to be a nuisance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Byron. Next up, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening. Another slow couple of weeks. We did go to Killington probably three times to help with a forest fire. Spent quite a few hours up there. We did have a fire committee meeting and while, while we're in there, I noticed that on the preferred vendor list that Bergeron is not on it. And I was hoping we could put them on it since that's where we buy all our gear from every year. If that's okay.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to add Bergeron to the preferred vendor list.
Don't move. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And motion carries.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I really don't have anything else to report, Mary.
Okay.
Mary, I have a question for Chris.
Yes, Joe.
Chris, the fire and that you went to Killington, was that on any state-owned land or is that on private property?
It was all on private property.
Okay, so, yeah, because the new, the new forest fire rules are that the state only reimburses for fires on state-owned property. So that's unfortunate from the way it used to be.
Right, yeah, I remember the old rules.
Yeah, they were much better.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted you to be aware that just if you guys go out on any mutual aid like that or if we have any fires in town, if they are on state-owned property, we have to, you know, let them know. Of course, they probably would know. And those fires are, there is a reimbursement for the towns involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
There were a couple of other things that came up at the fire committee meeting. We did begin discussing again the McKinley Avenue Fire Station. And I wanted to, before we had a working committee and with COVID, all of that committee meeting just kind of suspended. So let me kind of sound out the select board on a few things. One is, does the select board generally agree that McKinley Avenue needs work?
Yes. That's beyond work.
That's needed work for a lot of years.
Okay. So it sounds like we move on to the next question. Do we agree that a new facility might be needed?
I think that's appropriate, Mary. As, as with the Center Rutland Station, our department has outgrown its facilities, considering they were constructed in 1967 in a much different environment, much different setting of Rutland Town and a way different equipment requirements that our town has. So, yeah, that building probably doesn't meet a lot of the proper codes and stuff and the thought of remodeling would not sufficiently answer the needs of the town's department.
Okay. Does, Sharon, do you agree? You're, you're about to say something maybe?
Well, no, I mean, I would have heard it, I mean, Joey, I have not ever been in that station, so I don't know the condition. So I would have to think that those that are firemen or have been firemen there should know what they're talking about, I guess, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm moving up to, do we reconstitute the committee to work on the McKinley Avenue Fire Station or its replacement? So I, I, I think that's a yes all around.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And question, and this is a big one. Do we also charge the committee with looking into the possibility of a police facility there as well or somewhere, you know, a combined public safety facility?
Yes. That, that would be a good choice. I think it minimizes some of the core facilities. So rather than having two buildings or two places, it's, it's definitely something well worth looking into.
Right.
So Sharon, okay, and, and I would agree. So we will reconstitute the committee. If, see, last time I think it was the police chief, the fire chief, the, the deputies and the assistant chiefs in the departments and select board member, I think Josh went to those meetings, so it sounds like maybe the chair. Anyone else wish to join that working group?
Yeah, I think any of us that are on either police or fire committee should be a part of that.
Okay.
And I, Mary, I'd like to be part of it as just kind of the history between where we were and where we're going.
Okay. So.
Joe, I have a question for you. Is it even reasonable to consider a facility like that on McKinley? Because it doesn't look like there's that much room there.
Well, I think that's part of what the committee would have to address.
Yeah, all right.
There's enough room there, but there's a water problem. Can't get enough water flow.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that from, could JP explain that? I just, I wanted to, what, what is, what that is about?
Okay.
What's that?
Is that, what, what's the water issue? Is that, if we want to sprinkle the building, we'll have to come up with a plan? Is that, that the problem?
Yeah, we went down like a gazillion feet and I guess we got very, very poor performance. Not enough to, to operate a sprinkler system by far.
Right, right, yeah. And I, I read some of the minutes in regarding the proposal to run a water main up there and I think you remember this JP, when that sewer line was want, run. Originally, the plan was the state was going to do both sewer and water. And then they abandoned the water side. So I think along with the thoughts of a station, we'll have to think about what else we'll need and, and kind of figure that stuff out and then come up with a, with a, with a plan that works.
Right. I think initially it'd be good for the committee to start targeting some potential locations.
Other than McKinley?
Right. I don't see how McKinley survives without water.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a valuable piece of property, so it will offset what our purchase price is when we sell it.
Right. Well, the, the thing is, is, is I do believe Mrs. Baird still has the offer on the table to give us some additional land. There were some, I won't call it, not disagreements, but there's some difference of ideas on what would work the best there and, and so the potential for additional land.
I understood that's been taken off the table completely, Joe.
Okay, I, you know, I. Okay. I, you know, I haven't talked to her about it in a while, so I, I don't know. I know when we started this two years ago, um, she wanted to do something for us, but we had one idea and she had a different one. And so whatever. Um, but anyway, I think this is a, uh, something that the committee will have to discuss and then we can go forward from there.
Okay. So let's, um, get the committee set up, get some meetings. Um, Bill, if you could do a,
Mary?
Yes?
Um, I have a suggestion. You're talking about a, you're talking about a committee and you've included just about everyone in, in the town, uh, except one of your board members. So, and, and we're talking about some pretty heavy issues here. I mean, these are, these are real serious, uh, infrastructure issues. And I really think that you're, you're at the point where you might as well consider it a committee of the whole for the board. And you got your fire committee and your police committee and, and you as chairman. Uh, I guess I'm the only one that wasn't included in that and I'd like to be on the committee. So that would be make it a committee of the whole, would it not?
Um, it would, but it's also going to be a working committee, Don.
Right. So.
So it isn't just about, you know, talking and discussing, because it's going to have to be doing a lot of research.
What is, what does that have to do with excluding one of your board members?
We didn't exclude you, Don. Um, if you would like to be on it, we can constitute a committee of the whole. It's just that a lot of work is going to have to be done. And, you know, this is a fairly large group. So I will ask Bill to set up a doodle poll. And, um, have, send around so that we can start getting some meeting dates pulled together. And, um, figure out where we're going to meet or by Zoom for a while, like I would guess, and let us know. So.
I'm still not understanding, I'm still not understanding of your comments about it being a, a lot of work. I happen to be retired, so I guess there's not a, a lot of problem with me being able to do the work. Uh, and, and I have been, uh, a member of the volunteer fire department. So I know a little bit about, uh, you know, fire safety and operation and so forth. Um, so I don't know what your, I don't know what your concerns are. I mean, uh, you have another member. It's a large group. One more is going to kill it or what?
Let's move on, Don, please. Thank you. So Bill will send out the doodle poll and we'll see when we can get together. All right. Chris Clark, anything else or any other questions of Chris?
I'm all set, Mary.
Um, fireworks, um, the, the town fire department does not have the authority to issue firework permit, uh, permits for private individuals who wish to do a private display. So, um, there will be no posting on the town website, the list of folks who have received permits for fireworks. Um, and we're referring to the Supreme Court decision that came down last August, um, that interpreted the law. I think we had a brief discussion of this earlier, a couple of meetings prior.
Mary?
Yes.
So how does this work with the sale of fireworks? I mean, if you can't set them off, does that pretty much put those folks up on Woodstock Avenue out of business?
Well, that is a concern. I mean, the, the case that went to the Supreme Court was the town of Colchester. Um, and they were in a similar position. So, um, I think I sent around the decision for you all to read. And take a look at what we, what we can do and what we should be doing for enforcement and all of that is still, uh, and, and I did check and there does not appear to have been any corrective legislation um, that has been passed since the Supreme Court decision. So the Supreme Court decision is what governs right now.
So.
Did we be revoking our permit we gave them?
You know, see, this is what brings it. There's, there's so many moving parts to this. Um, and in the old days before five or six years ago, when the state of Vermont supposedly said they were okay to have fireworks. And these companies sprung up, people would buy them out of state and randomly set them off in their backyard. Um, and I bring this up because last fall, um, I was working at my daughter's new house. And about eight or nine o'clock, somebody just set off a whole bunch of fireworks in the backyard. And it was like, how are, you know, and, and my point would be is how are we going to be able to, you know, stop this or police this? And, and I don't know if our, you know, the police department can't be everywhere. And it's going to be a real challenge. So I think education in the next, well, you got about a week because they start Memorial Day and then it'll be Fourth of July. And then it's just like any old time, they want to shoot off fireworks. And we need to get the word out that you can no longer legally set off backyard private fireworks.
I think you all need to notify the people on Woodstock Avenue, because I got a call from someone who claims they went up there and bought fireworks and questioned, do they need a permit? And the guy said, oh, you're fine in the town of Rutland. So maybe, um.
So that, back to my point, I think we should be talking to Kevin about revoking the permit.
I think you're absolutely right.
They can't legally do what we gave them a permit to do. I think we got to revoke that permit.
That's right. So, but you know, the bigger, the bigger picture too JP is they do have a place in Pittsburgh. And unless, you know, it's going to happen, all right, I can't go to Woodstock Avenue, I'll go to Route seven in Pittsburgh and buy them. So somehow or other, we just got to try to figure a way out for our town residents to know that they can't do backyard fireworks.
Well, the next step would be to shut down Woodstock Avenue.
That's it. I, I, I agree. And I, and I think sooner rather than later.
So I'm, I'd make a motion, we revoke the permit that we issued based on the Supreme Court decision.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's made and seconded to revoke the permit for the fireworks vendors on Woodstock Avenue. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We should, Bill probably have Bill send the letter or Bill probably knows a guy that can send the letter.
Yes, I know a guy.
Okay. So, um, motion carries and we will suspend, we will revoke the license. All right. Um, so. Now Ed Dumas is in the room. So Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Ed.
So last weeks, we had, uh, thirty-two calls for service, uh, indirectly or directly related to the Holiday Inn, Quality Inn. We had, I could pick out ten calls. So things are seen to be dying down there. Also went down there, they hired, uh, there's three security people down there. I think two from the state, one goes back and forth between Quality and Holiday Inn. And the, uh, one stays at the Holiday Inn and the Holiday Inn hired their own security. So things seem to have calmed down in that area. Uh, I did have some concerns about the, one of the established across the street. I asked, uh, uh, I didn't attend the meeting, but I asked somebody, uh, to ask the state if they're, were allowing, uh, voucher people to stay at the, uh, I can't think of the holiday, the Inred Cross and the Holiday Inn.
The old Howard Johnsons.
I think it's, yeah, the old Howard Johnsons. I remember that.
The Red Roof. Is it the Red Roof?
Yep.
Red Roof, yeah. And they, they do not take any voucher, uh, people there. So that's not an issue. And other than that, really don't have much. Uh, also the car was supposed to be in this week. Uh, Ted has checked it. Deputy Chief Washers looked into it. They haven't had a receipt in the answer yet. Uh, so hopefully we'll get it soon. About all I have at this point in time.
Okay. Um, any questions or of the police chief? We do have a, uh, police committee meeting scheduled for Thursday afternoon at four thirty. Um, I will report that I, um, did receive, the chief has included a, included me in the working group that's to discuss the hotel issues. Um, and I have been included some in the meetings there and was able to call in for some of them. Um, so you've, there's, the state is also participating, um, and anything from those meetings that we should, I mean, it does seem to be calming down a little bit on the, um, south end of town. And there is a communication that came around from the state saying that they were hiring, um, a contractor to provide FEMA non-congregate wraparound services uh, to five hotels, including the Holiday Inn. So a contractor is going to, you know, do some ma- better management of the site, site education and support for the folks who are there. So a, a step forward from the state. Okay.
Mary, Mary, I have a, I have a question for us or for the rest of the board or whatever. Um, the Holiday Inn now, do they take normal guests there any longer? Or are they just taking, um, folks through this voucher system?
Just the voucher system, Joey.
Okay. So given the problems that we had with the fire, the lack of maintenance and all of the things there. And I brought this up when this issue arose. Um, I think it was like going on two years now, that we should contact the Holiday Inn Corporation who owns that name. Because this is not a corporate, uh, entity. This is a franchise entity. And I don't know if the board ever decided to make them aware of what's going on there. Because it is my opinion as a person who travels and likes to stay at inns, that that facility should no longer bear the name of the Holiday Inn. And I, and I don't know, um, if that gives them any privileges or whatever, but that is not a Holiday Inn. It is, does not meet their standards. And I think it's the black eye in the Holiday Inn chain. And I think the owners of that name should be made aware of what's going on down there. And I, I just, how the rest of the board feels about that.
I think you have a good point, Joey, because people that come to town, um, if they're looking for a place to stay, I, I mean, I tell people, stay away from there. Right now they're not taking anybody, but what they classify as homeless, I take issue. Because the, some of these homeless down there are from Springfield and are from, uh, Troy. And they're not the homeless that I've seen on my decks for, um, a number of years. So.
So prob- this probably segues into the health officer report.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, uh, also I might, I might add, uh, I might add that when they reconstituted and they claimed bankruptcy or whatever happened when it was resold. One of the, one of the big considerations in terms of their appraisal was the fact that they were going to lose the Holiday Inn designation and franchise. And I know that was, that as far as they were concerned, the buyers, uh, was one of the big reasons that they saw a real, real drop in their appraised value. And I believe they got it. They got some anyway. But I don't know how they could be claiming that it wasn't, it wasn't going to be under the Holiday Inn franchise anymore and yet still use the name. So the kind of, well, I don't kind of, I, I agree with Joey and Sharon that, uh, you know, they're, they're not entitled to use it, especially if they're claiming that, that they shouldn't have a appropriate appraisal because they don't have the franchise. They admitted that they didn't have, they were going to lose the Holiday Inn designation. Uh, we ought to check in or have our lawyer check in on that. Uh, somebody check in on it. It may be asked, ask our listeners to, uh, verify whether they in fact are a franchise or not. But I agree, they shouldn't have, if they don't, if they don't have it, then they shouldn't have it, really.
Okay.
Talking about stuff that will be covered in the health officer report.
Well, let me just say, uh, Chief Dumas, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Town Health Officer Report. Thank you, Chief. JP?
Yes.
Your turn.
So we conducted a comprehensive inspection of the Holiday Inn. I haven't had an opportunity to put my report in writing yet. But I can tell the board that the facility we inspected met most of the criteria for the life safety code, except for a few minor violations, two of which were corrected while we were there. So I can report to you that that facility, and my understanding is they are taking members of the public. But that facility, uh, safety wise, is a world apart from where it was just a year ago. And they also, they have their alarm systems, computerized, maintenance records, everything is there to look at. Um, I have to say that somebody paid attention and made the repairs and brought the systems up to speed that needed to be for the safety of the occupants. They also have, um, plans in the next twelve to fifteen months to recarpet and redo the interior. They're prepared to spend a considerable investment in that regard. So the new guy in charge tells me that he heard us and wants me to accept his actions to date as representative of his commitment to continue. And I do. So I, I think this is good news for the town and it's good news for people to stay at the Holiday Inn down there.
John, when did they start taking new people? Because he told me they were just taking the homeless.
So when we were down doing the inspection, he said they had members of the public staying there.
Okay.
So the other thing, uh, for the health officer is that the governor has revised the, uh, mask mandate, as I'm sure you're all aware. And the issue is, are we going to open town hall? So we probably should convene and support a health to discuss this. So I would make a motion that we, uh, convene as the board of health.
Motion's made. Is there a second and seconded? All in favor of convening the Board of Health, please say aye.
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 Aye. The Board of Health is convened.
And so my concern is, and what the board has to decide tonight, is that the, the current restriction is one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet. And so you, you're going to run into the issue of, are you vaccinated? Are you not vaccinated? Will you show your vaccination card? Is it a HIPAA thing? There's just a, a ton of issues around that. But the rule right now, the one we have to pay attention to town hall is one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet. And that person has to wear a mask. Now, you really going to have to just rely on people to tell you that they're not vaccinated? That doesn't give me a great deal of comfort for our employees. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I think the board is going to have to make a decision. Do you want to continue the mask mandate and the limited access to town hall? With the proviso that if somebody is willing to show you the vaccination card, they can come in. Cause you can have unlimited vaccinated people from different households, as long as everybody's vaccinated. So if we treated the town office, as Josh used to call it, the people's house of the town, we're combining a lot of, a lot of different families. We can do that, fine, as long as everybody's vaccinated. They're willing to be upfront, show their vaccination cards. But I don't know if you can impose a requirement on people that they show their vaccination card. There are some communities that are doing that, but boy, it's awful sticky.
And an awful lot of extra work for, um, our, our office staff. Um, JP, if we opened the office and did away with the by appointment thing, but required masks, would we be okay? As a, as a first step.
You, you wouldn't see the, the problem, Joe, is if you had two people walk into the clerk's office that were not vaccinated, there's not a hundred square feet for those people to occupy.
Even with a mask? Right?
Even with a mask? Yeah. The, the, right. The one unvaccinated person, fifty square feet per, per one, assumes that that person will be wearing a mask. They still need the fifty square feet.
Well, see, um, see, my problem is, is I agree with you is that if we're not responsible enough to get vaccinated, what makes you think we're responsible enough to wear a mask?
For to be honest about your status, quite frankly, I, I'm amazed at the different viewpoints people have as to whether they should or should not be allowed or required or able to discuss their vaccine, vaccine status.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, it's just the way we are right now in society, everything's contentious.
Well, what, what do you think, JP, about the, you, you mentioned that there's, it's in dispute as to whether we even have the right to ask somebody to show their, their vaccination card?
Some people, some people has, have raised HIPAA rights, saying that it's their medic, it's a privilege, it's their privileged medical record and they don't have to disclose it.
So has the state made a ruling on that?
No.
I mean, we, we should be following the state guidelines, that 50 square feet, that came from the state, did it?
Yes, it did. And that was just revised, I want to say, was it last week, that was just revised from 100 square feet? It used to be one unvaccinated person needed 100 square feet, they've reduced that to 50 square feet.
Well, let's see, what is, I don't know, we're going back into new math now, how does the 50 square foot compare?
Yeah. Five feet by 10 feet, Don, compared to 10 feet by 10 feet?
Well, yeah, but the, but the, but the, the original guideline, when this whole thing was passed, was that there was a six-foot requirement. I mean, even in the school system, it was six feet. So that, that was the distance requirement, was six feet. So how do we get the 50 square feet from that?
Well, but, you know, but you make a good point, Don. The, 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 there's also in effect, the universal guidance, which is social distancing and masking when you don't know your audience.
Right.
So.
Well, you know, I, I suppose, you know, like you say, JP, you know, it's, it's a contentious thing, it can be as contentious, I guess, as somebody wants it to be, but there's so many other places that are open. I mean, the city hall's been open and, you know, I, I just, I, I just don't see us continuing to hold out and hold out and hold out, out of some fear that somebody might, may, may, yeah, the poor person over there that, that, that got cold, that got head on by somebody that came across the line. I mean, there wasn't any guarantee on that one. There's no guarantees, so.
We're not, we're not holding out, we're not holding out on anything, we're just complying with the governor's, the various provisions of the governor's emergency order.
Well, we talked about having the, we talked about having the select board room open so we could ha- actually have a meeting in there and, and, and then making different, different requirements perhaps for the general public, if they're not vaccinated or whatever, to wear a mask or not come in or participate with our new system that Bill's put in. And I might add that I, I'd like to give Bill a compliment that saving us quite a bit of money on a beautiful installation there. It's a good job, Bill.
He knows, he knows a guy.
He's, he's a talented person.
He knows a guy.
He does, he does know a lot of guys, but in, in any case, I think we should be doing what, whatever we can to try to get as close to normal as we can. And I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with saying that you can come into the town office if you have a, a vaccination card, if somebody wants to protest, and they can just say, well, we're sorry, we, we decided that you would show your card so that we would allow people to come in and use the office. So if you don't want to show your card, then you can't come in, or you got to wear a mask.
I'd be okay with that. I'd be okay with that.
But at least.
JP? Excuse me.
Yeah.
How does, how does our office staff number one lady feel about it? Is she still on?
I hope so, because she's next.
I, I, I'm, I'm here.
Well, I think you need to weigh in on this, and I think our listeners and everybody needs to weigh in on this a little bit, how comfortable you are. Because our responsibility is you guys first and then the general public second.
Sure. Um, so I'm okay with us moving forward in whatever steps that may be. Honestly, I've heard a lot of people say that they're, they're ready, and I'm ready. I mean, I, I, my two weeks will be up on Friday after my second shot. So I was the last one in the building to get vaccinated. My only qualm, I guess maybe, is people using their ability to come back into the office as a social hour. And that's my only concern. Because, you know, there have been a lot of people over the past year calling with their opinions, and I can just foresee the doors opening and like 15 people show up at once just because they haven't seen anybody. So let's open, but let's open softly somehow, maybe with one, a limit somehow, so that we're not allowing a party to happen in there.
That's a good plan. JP, can we do that?
Pretty sure we, we can do just about anything we want. The, no, the emergency order allows us to be more strict than the governor. I, we choose not to be, but we have that option. So I think we can fasten whatever remedy the board is comfortable with to make our staff comfortable. And as far as people congregating, just a simple word saying, appreciate if you move on, folks, because it ain't a coffee club.
I actually had to do that a couple days ago, believe it or not. So yeah, that's why I brought it up. But yeah, I'm ready to move forward. So whatever you guys choose and however you choose to do it, our office is ready and looking forward to it.
So can we move forward, JP, opening the office and still require masks?
Yes, we can.
Then.
Well.
Mary?
What?
Sharon, I have to get up, I have an emergency call for the mission.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon, take care.
Night, Sharon.
Night.
Joey, you didn't, you didn't mean, everybody wears a mask? I mean, we don't, we don't even have that rule in the country. If you've been vaccinated and you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask.
How do I, how do I know that you're ma- you walk into that office and you don't wear a mask and you're not vaccinated? See, that's, that's my problem. And because people aren't going to be forthright, you're going to have a problem. So, you know, baby steps. That, that was my thought, but I'm only one, one voice here out of five. Well, four now.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I, and again, are you talking just about the general public? Are you talking about us? I mean, how many people, how many staff members and/or select board members or department heads or whatever have had their vaccinations and they're good to go? And, you know, I just can't see requiring the staff or the board members to wear a mask if they've been vaccinated. I mean, you know, if you want to show your card once to prove you got it, then that's it. I suppose you wouldn't have to show it every single time.
Well, one of the concerns, you know, one of the concerns about this virus, and, and it's bothered me right along, is that right from the get-go, is you can be a carrier without being vaccinated and have no symptoms, and you can still be a carrier being vaccinated and have no symptoms. So there is some unique things about this that are beyond normalness. I was approached by the, when I went to the transfer station, and they wanted to know, one of the boys up there working wanted to know how much longer we're going to make them wear these masks. And I said, well, we'll have to, you know, we're going to come up with something. And, you know, I, I'm afraid that, I don't know, people just are going to say, okay, then back, you know where we are, Don, they're just going to say we're vaccinated and we don't need a mask and we're just going to move on. And, and I'm just.
Well, I don't, I, I just, I think you got to trust people more than that. And I think this, this, this country is becoming way, way, way too protective of ridiculousness. You know, maybe somebody can do this, maybe somebody can do that, well, you know. And, and the stuff that you're saying, Joe, about you can still carry it if you're this, there hasn't been any proof shown of any of this stuff at any degree whatsoever to cause it. If, if you can, if you can be a carrier even if you've been vaccinated, then what's the purpose of vaccination? You're supposed to be approaching herd immunity. When, when you get to a particular point, there's going to be some people that always get something. Is it one, two, or three? Are we going to wait until there's zero people contracting anything from anybody in this country before we get back to normal? That's ridiculous. I mean, you know, we just got, we got to come back to our senses on this thing, we really do. They haven't, there hasn't been anything shown that people that are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, are carrying this disease around and, and spreading it to others. There isn't any proof of that. That's just an excuse being used by people that want us to be masked forever. And I'm not buying that stuff. I think we've got to finally get back to normal. And if we don't start trusting people and, and not assuming that somebody's going to be dishonest and say, oh, I've been vaccinated, when they're not, you know, I, I, I just, I think our, our people, I, I would bet that if you asked the people in the town, you know, you'd find out that most of them are ready to get on with business, they really are. I mean, our kids are going to school and they're fine. There hasn't been any epidemic that's occurred up at the school. And you got, you, you know, you have people that are students that are social distanced, they're following the rules, they're, you know, they're wearing masks or, or not, or, you know, whatever. But there, there isn't, yeah, well, you know.
So speaking of getting on with business, I haven't heard any motion.
Well, I'm going to leave that up to JP, because he's a health officer. I'm just, I'm giving my comments, but I, you know, I don't want to override, you know, I just think we should do what's reasonable, and I think, you know, I think JP's been trying to do the best job he can. He'll, if he recommends that we open under some particular, some kind of extended protection but allowance, then fine, but.
Well, what does the board feel about, what about, what does the board feel about requiring a mask unless you show a vaccine card? And if you show a vaccine card, you don't have to wear a mask?
I'm fine with that.
But you don't, if you don't show, well, how, how does everybody else feel about that? It's kind of a midpoint.
Sounds good. How does Carrie feel about it?
She doesn't want to answer me.
I'll answer it. Okay.
No, you won't, no, you won't. You're going to say you're ready to move on and do whatever the board says. You've already.
Um, mo- can I just say that most people that normally come into my office do offer to tell me that they've had their vaccination? They sometimes offer to even show me their card. And so that's not really an issue for me. I think that to be on the safe side, the people that I haven't seen on a regular basis or over the past year, I may wear a mask just so that, you know, it's somebody I don't know. So yeah, I'm ready, and it sounds good to, to give those provisions.
So I'd make that a motion then.
Would, would that, JP, will that?
I'll second a motion.
Okay, now I could, yeah.
Motion is made and seconded that we reopen town hall with the proviso that people will enter wearing masks unless they provide proof that they have been vaccinated. Is that the motion?
Yes, and I want to stress that that's based on space limitations of the town office.
Okay.
JP, so I have a question, Mary, before we vote, in the discussion period here. Do we have to take each town facility and have special or separate recommendations?
No, well, I mean, I mean, I would think everybody would be okay with that townwide.
So, so that would, that would basically include the two fire stations and the transfer station and the highway garage and the town office?
Correct.
Okay. So, so should we have that motion, should your motion reflect that, JP? I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Sure.
Okay. So the, the motion is broadened. Joe seconded the first motion, Don seconded the second. Do you both agree to that extension?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. You ready to vote on the issue?
So just to be clear, Mary, we are voting that if, if people provide a valid vaccination card, they no longer have to wear a mask as long as they meet the space requirement as set by the governor. Is that right?
Well, yes.
JP, does that, does that sound right, JP?
See, I've not, I didn't understand the space thing.
Didn't you say that we had, there are certain space requirements that are provided that we have to maintain?
Yes. We're, we're, we're pass, I, I only said that in connection with why we're passing this rule. This rule is being passed because we have space limitations in town.
Okay.
And so to honor the one unvaccinated person per 50 square feet, this applies to everybody and takes care of that.
Right. So I go to the transfer station, I show them my vaccination card, I no longer have to wear a mask?
Correct.
Okay.
Nor do they have, nor do they have to wear a mask if they have a valid vaccination card. Because that, that'll answer, that'll answer the question that they have of you.
All right.
Yeah, okay. Now that we're all on the same page, I'm ready to vote. Thank you, Mary, for your patience.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business for the health committee? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go back to the select board meeting.
I'll move.
Motion's made, is there a second? Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear one.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to go back into the select board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're back in the select board meeting. And so JP, I think has concluded his health officer report. Committee meeting updates. I think we've touched on the issues that came up at the fire committee. Is there anything from the water sewer committee that we need to discuss? You have the minutes in front of you. Oh, there. There was an issue. This is on the request that we had to extend the municipal water line located along Post Road. Yeah, Mr. Stubbs came in and spoke to water issues his daughter's house is experiencing. And there, we had quite a bit of discussion. The agreement was, we probably should have an engineer evaluate the scope of the project to see how many connections can be made and to see what the capacity is. And the, the committee recommended Otter Creek Engineering, that we contact Otter Creek Engineering to do this preliminary evaluation to see if extending the water line is feasible. Did I get that right? Joe, I think you were there, Don was there?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to have Otter Creek Engineering look into this water line extension?
Yes, I'll move that.
Motion's made, is it seconded?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All vote aye and the motion carries. Okay. Um, any other committee reports?
Yes, one. Um, the uh Townwide Celebration Committee had some discussions. We didn't have a meeting. Uh, we were having discussions about whether we would have a meeting. And uh Sharon and I uh have a very polite and friendly disagreement because, well, quite frankly, she's just, she wants to be a little more concerned than most and for good reason. Uh, she's, she's had health issues where she's, she's just a little bit fearful. So I don't blame her. Uh, but along the lines of trying to get us open, um, I had the suggestion and we had discussed it. And I told her I was going to bring it up tonight and she said she didn't have a problem with it, but that, but that she wasn't in favor of it. So um, my idea was not to try to do a full-blown uh celebration because I know how much work went into that. And I know, I know the timing uh is not right to try to do something like that. But I don't see why we can't, under the considerations of what we're doing with having a fireworks, I don't see why we couldn't put together uh a barbecue, at least uh cook up some hamburgers and hot dogs on the Killingtons uh unit that we had there. I would cer- and I would certainly be willing to put a full day or two or whatever it takes into this. And also see if we could get Mark Foley uh to uh donate his uh his ice cream wagon for the kiddies. And at least have something where, because people are going to come anyway and they're going to try to get there early, like they usually do for uh for the fireworks celebration. And I don't have a problem with them um with doing something a little extra for our people. And uh.
We, we already made this decision.
What, who did what?
We already made, we already made the decision not to have it. We're not going to revisit every decision we make. We made this decision weeks ago.
Right, we made the decision based on the facts at the time and the facts that uh now have changed. So why can't we change our minds then? Why do we have to be bound by by restrictions that were put in place that have now been lifted? That 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 doesn't make. Go ahead, JP.
Because of all of the plans and the preparation, you obviously don't have any idea what's involved. If you knew the work that Mary, Josh, and a lot of other people put into it, it's not something you can pull together and have with any kind of decency. But we've already made a decision not to have it and we won't be at 80%. So I just don't know why we're going to be revisiting a decision we've already made on this.
Well, I prefaced my remarks by saying that I was fully aware of how much time went into it because I had a very extensive conversation with Bill about it. Not talking about doing bands and I'm not talking about doing regional ambulance or helicopter.
If you want to do it, make a motion. If your motion survives, off you go. If it doesn't, you don't. Let's move on. We don't have to talk about it all night.
Well, hey, listen, JP, there's a committee.
Why are you making a motion?
It's called the Townwide Entertainment Committee, you know. And apparently, there, there's no need for a town entertainment committee, right, Mary? So you appointed me to a committee that has no purpose, right? There's no entertainment?
Did you have a motion to be made?
I just wanted to have a little discussion on this. JP apparently doesn't want to discuss it, so, but he's one and I'm another. I'd just like to know what the board feels about having a reasonable barbecue and ice cream for the people that are up there to enjoy the fireworks and just saying, here, this is a, this is, you know.
Sharon already told you she doesn't agree with it. I'm telling you I don't agree with it. You've got two other board members you can ask.
I think since we made the decision that we weren't going to do anything this year, let's just move forward. People have that in mind that we're not doing it, so let's just move forward. They're going to say this board doesn't know what they're doing. They make up their minds as they go along. So I'm, I'm okay with not doing it this year and we'll be fine.
Okay, well, that's fine with me then. I won't make any motions. But I would like to ask the Chair for for a little bit of privilege here, okay? Might I do that, Madam Chair?
Don, you've been talking for the past whatever. I don't understand.
I don't care how long I've been talking. This is my, this is my privilege as a board member. You don't want to listen to me? Go home. Listen.
Don, you're being rude now. We are being.
No, Mary's going in the meeting.
Please.
I asked you for a point of privilege, Mary. I asked you for a point of privilege.
We are under committee, committee meeting updates. We're, we're not yet down under other new business. We have other items on the agenda we have to get to. And this meeting has gone on for some time. So.
My time is not limited, so go ahead.
Are there any other committee meeting updates? Okay. Um, the project, Select Board Project List, Bill has combined and reposted. And it looks like we're actually moving forward on on quite a few. We're doing quite a bit of work on water sewer. Um, we're Town Hall Monument. Bill, did we have anyone volunteer yet to be on the committee?
Uh, we have had no new people step forward to ask about being on the committee.
Okay. Um, Town Hall Building Improvements have been ongoing. Uh, Pocket Park, we heard from tonight. Um, pedestrian, we talked about Northwood Trail System. Um, the water sewer inventory is close to being done. The shared juice path, we're well on the way to putting in our application. Um, I believe the slip lane discussion went to the Highway Committee to discuss. Um, dilapidated buildings JP has been working on succession planning. We haven't really talked about and we probably should. Um, it looks like Pocket Park's down there twice, Bill. Um, Route JP Sidewalk, um, no, nothing new to report there. Rooftop solar arrays, we haven't done anything for a while. Uh, Center Rutland Fire Station lawsuit, we haven't heard for a couple of months. We did hear at, um, but that's not surprising, not much is going on. And then we discussed replacement of McKinley Avenue Fire Station. So that's the project list. Under New Business, um, Board to Discuss the Lister Request for Grand List Extension. Is Howard Burgess still on the call?
Good evening.
Hi, Howard.
Yes, the Listers have requested a 15-day extension for logging to Grand List because we're running out of some uh tight times here. Uh, quite frankly, the business personal property is quite behind schedule this year. People are working out of their homes. And as a result of that, the returns just haven't come in like they should have. So we've asked for a 15-day extension. We'll only use as little of it, as much of it as we need. And hopefully, uh, it's not going to affect anything. It's not going to affect the getting the tax bills out. Everything will be done on time. But we just need a little breathing room to get through this. And that's uh, that's the request that you have.
Okay.
I would move, I would move, Mary, that we uh authorize a 15-day or extension for the Listers as requested.
Motion's made. Is there a second? And seconded? All right, all in favor? Any discussion? Any questions?
And also I would, Mary, I would modify that, that we, we authorize you to sign as Chair.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion for the requesting a 15-day extension with me to sign? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All abstain, Mary.
Oh, so all vote yes. That gives three of us to support the motion.
Can I make one more comment before I go? Regarding access uh to the building, the meeting room downstairs, uh, we would like to use that for the Fire District to have our annual meeting. Will the same rules apply that uh we can have a meeting down there? And and people that uh can show their cards can get in without a mask? And if they don't, they'll wear a mask? Is it, is it going to be okay to to hold meetings in the, in the Town Hall? That's, that's my question.
Well, I would assume so, JP.
It's gonna, I mean, we just passed the rule that applies to the town facilities.
Okay.
What, what, what are you asking?
I just, just asking if it applies to the Town, Town Hall for meetings downstairs, if we can use that uh the same way.
How many people?
It's, it's, it's hard to know. I mean, probably, there could be 40 people. But I really don't know. It's a, it's a tough one. I don't think.
Well, according to the Governor, if they're all vaccinated, they can meet down there.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. That's, that's what I was hoping. And and it won't be, at the most, it'll be a couple of weeks at least before we could even have a meeting. So it could be a month away. But it's good to know that we can plan on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. And I've, I've signed the extension request and it's in the pink folder. Okay, um, next item is the review for approval, the VLCT Safety Grant Application. And I think Bill sent you a summary showing which departments had requested pieces of safety equipment. And I've got the longer application here and it's apparently got a different pieces go, yeah, there's a Highway Department request of um Fire Department request and a Police Department request. Anybody else? And Town Hall request. So um, Bill, do you want to just give us a quick summary of what we're requesting?
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, the summary that was given out to everybody uh just spared the the drastic details of everything. So for Town Hall, we have uh the the two new hard drives for the security camera system here that will allow us to uh double our storage capacity for video. And I'm talking with uh Chief Dumas and Deputy Chief Washburn. The system we have now has come in very, very handy. So this, this will just allow us to expand our storage ability. Uh, and we talked about the uh last meeting, uh applying for an ID printer to uh allow us to print uh the same kind of consistent IDs for everybody in town. Uh, so that way, anybody that's going out into town or anybody that represents the town can have a consistent ID. We're not sure we're going to get that, but uh they said they haven't been asked for that before. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be a test subject to see if we can, if we can get that. Uh, the, uh, for Highway, the, we get to uh apply for the backup camera for, for the new truck. Uh, that, that falls under their guidelines, so we can apply for reimbursement on that. Uh, the Fire Department is buying new boots. Uh, we're, we're, they're buying more than five pairs, but the grant application uh limits the reimbursement uh for, for, for gear. So that's the most we, that they can be asked for uh under their guidelines. Uh, for the Police Department, uh, the electronic lock for their office door, this would be the same style locks that we have on the outside doors of Town Hall, being added to their door. Um, only they would have codes to get into their office. Uh, but this would be for the same kind of uh code restricted access to their, to their door. So in total, the grant application is $7,112.48. And we would get, uh, we would expect up to half of that back, so $3,556.24 will come back to us.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to uh apply for the uh safety grant as provided by Bill.
Motion's made. Um, is there a second?
I'll second a motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Who do you want to sign it?
Um, are you supposed to, Mary?
I think so. It says Senior Municipal Official. Bill has already signed it.
Just one person needs, just one board member needs to sign it.
Yep.
So that motion will include that the Chair would sign the, the application.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Nice bit of work putting this together, Bill.
Bill, this is all new stuff, right? Now, this, this doesn't apply to the conversation we had about those air purifiers, does it?
Correct, that, that's, that, that we can't use this for that purpose. So this is, this is separate equipment. And this, this has to meet VLCT guidelines, so, yep.
Gotcha.
Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, uh, future of the face shields and face covering ordinance. That's item E under New Business. Did we dispose? Is that something different from what we talked about as the um Health Board?
No.
So we're covered, we've covered that.
We have.
Okay. And F, we've covered reopening Town Hall. Um, item G under New Business, the deadline to submit articles to the Circle. I believe is, is it June 1st, Bill?
I believe it is the 8th. That sounds correct.
Is, one's the, one's the deadline and one is the the public anticipate a publication date. Let me see if I can find it. Um, nice job. Uh, the publication is, has gone out. Um, Janelle has taken over very nicely and we're glad to have her. So we still have folks pitching in to get some of the parts of the mailing done. Um, eventually, we'll be bringing our RSVP folks back. But for the time being.
June, June 7th.
June 7th.
June 7th. Just found it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I was, wasn't scanning as fast as you were. Okay. If you could pass that along unless the department heads have already heard it. Um, okay, ARPA funds, the expected ARPA funds, um, Bill and I and I think Ted, Ed, um, were in on the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Uh, record a one-hour uh discussion of what to expect with, with the federal funding that's coming through for municipalities.
It was Byron and Howard.
Byron and Howard, thank you. Um, we are expecting somewhere around 406,000. It will come uh in halves. The first half is probably going to hit before the end of this fiscal year. So that would be later this month. Well, we're running out of May, but in June. And then the second half will come before the end of the year, probably um sometime late December. The, we're unclear what is happening with the um money that's earmarked for county governments. There has been a Vermont exception requested because, of course, we don't really have a county government. Um, so we may be also, and the expectation is we will probably be getting another chunk of money, even larger, um, from the second pot of money. But there was no um indication of what, you know, whether that's actually been firmed up or not. The money must be obligated. The good news is we have plenty of time to do this. Um, the money must be obligated by December 31st of 2024. So we have, what, three, three and a half? Two, two and a half years to obligate it? And then we have another two years beyond that to actually spend it. So we have some um good timelines now. Unlike the, some of the earlier funding that came through where we only had a few months to spend it. This is much better. Things that we can spend it for include public health matters, allowable expenses, and we can recoup these. Um, public health, direct aid to individuals and businesses that were affected by the pandemic, um, commercial and economic development, infrastructure. And then there's another category, but there's more steps that you have to go through if you want to apply for funds than that. Um, eligible uses include wages for public safety employees, um, direct cash or loans to individuals. direct cash or loans to individuals, affordable housing, even childcare and education, hazard pay. Infrastructure can include water and sewer and broadband and stormwater and also lead paint abatement. So there are some infrastructure that is not covered and cannot be covered, but that's a pretty broad use of it. The League of Cities and Towns had a good suggestion, and that is that we put, start soliciting input, not just from our department heads, but from the public at large. And have maybe one or two listening sessions scheduled just for this purpose and ask our folks out there what they think and how we should use the funding. So I would like to get your approval to set up a couple of listening sessions. They can be prior to our regular select board meeting if you choose. And maybe for an hour, you know, as, as we do with the library session. What's your thought? And I think it's important because if we determine a direction to go in and our citizens are not behind it or had other ideas, this will at least be getting their input before we make any decisions on how the money is spent. So your thoughts on setting up a couple of listening sessions?
Good idea.
Should be all right, Mary.
Okay. Do you like the idea, okay, of doing it at, say, 5 o'clock before a regular select word meeting?
Yeah, that works, I guess.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right, so let me go ahead and set those up and start the discussions. Bill and I will work on some, you know, announcement and some way of getting the word out that we want to hear from people. And also maybe a link to the League of Cities and Towns presentation, which was recorded, and I think I sent that around to you folks as well, so you could take a look at it. It was a pretty good discussion, still quite a few unknowns, but we're getting there.
Mary, a question or comment here?
Yep.
Yeah, thank, thank you for, or, or Bill, whoever provided the link. I got to watch it the next day. It wa, it was interesting. There were a couple of things, what, they didn't mention, well, they did mention that the one thing that you should really do is make sure you keep the money sequestered in some kind of a separate account. But I didn't hear anything said about whether it could be put at any kind, any kind. Now, I'm not talking about playing Mr. Belfour at the stock market, but can we put it at interest? I mean, does this money just have to sit there and without gaining any interest?
Oh, no, I don't think so. I went over and talked with Carrie after I listened to the presentation. And I suspect she might be in touch with the auditors who in the past have said we should have separate accounts on things anyway. But, so I think we can try and generate some interest. And then the question is, is the interest bound by the, the requirements as well? So I think it, I think it is, but I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask again how she's doing. Maybe she's, is she still on the call? Whether we've gotten an account ready and any sign of applying for the money? We were told to start the process. Is Carrie still on?
She is, yes. Should be.
Okay.
Well, and then as a, as a follow up, I don't know, we're, we're just about done with it. Would it be appropriate, Bill, to talk about that, those air purifiers now? Especially considering that we've just made a decision to open the building up?
Certainly, certainly can if you want to. Mary has the estimate from ARRIS.
Okay, yeah, let me find it. ARRIS of Rutland provided an estimate to do six air purifiers. It's called ARRIS Beyond Guardian Air. Six at the cost of $1,500 per unit for a total of $9,000.
Now, Bill, that, the six did not include the, that additional one? Or did you change it?
That, that isn't the, well, the original one expired. So this isn't, this, it had to be renewed anyway. But the sixth one would be the one that we talked about that you wanted for the hallway. So that would be
Okay.
The five, the five rooms plus the hallway.
Good, good. So what about? Have you contacted them, Bill?
Yes, so ob, obviously it was a little, little unusual that we would ask to, to take, take delivery of them and, and not have a firm date on when we would pay for them. But he said he'd be willing to provide four of them if we signed the, the, the purchase agreement for all six of them.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
Provided, he, he did ask that we have them paid in full by by July.
Right, and, and we've, we've been given assurances that it's going to be within this fiscal year anyway, so.
We're good for, yep.
Yeah. Okay, Mary, the reason, the reason I brought that up is that I, I asked Bill to add one to that. There were five on the original contract. And I, I thought it would be appropriate if we opened the building to make sure that the hallway as a public space was included in that. Especially the hallway, since that's where the, the public is going to be traveling, so. And he thought as well of it, so we added the sixth one. And to try to get it in there as soon as possible, even though we don't have the money for it yet, so that it would be there when we open it up to the public. So if we could do that, it would be helpful if we could get those four in there and put them in the public spaces. That would be the Lister's office and the town clerk's office and the hallway, that's three. And I guess, I don't know, Bill's office or.
So I got cut off, but I got cut off for this conversation, Don, I apologize. What, what? What are, what are we talking, where did the need for these arise?
I didn't hear you, John Paul, what is the what?
What, what are we talking about buying at $1,500 apiece?
The, the air purifiers.
Has there been something wrong with the air in the town office?
I don't know, let Bill explain it, though this was already approved by you and this.
Well, this, this. So we got the original quote, so once, when the, early on, when the money was, when the information came out about the money being, being allocated, I think Joe, Joe, you had reached out to the owner of ARRIS of Rutland to, and had him reach out to me about installing some of these units at the office. So he had come by and, and looked and, and said, based upon the layout, you know, and that typically the office doors are closed. These are, these would, there'd be, need to be one in each, each room. And they are designed to clean, clean the air and, and change out the air and are, are effective units. I do have some information I can forward to, to the board members about, about, about their ability, if, if you'd like it. But this, yeah, Joe, Joe had reached out to, to the owner of the company who at one point did live in town, but he, he had sent us the information based upon our request.
But is there some, is there some, somebody come in and say, hey, your air is bad, that we need these?
It kills germs too, like viruses.
Part of it, part of it JP is to do with the, what's going on with the virus part of it. This would help with our employees that have some serious allergies. And so I told them that it would be a good idea, you know, we, we would look into it and, and get a quote and what it would cost us. And we just have to decide if we're, I think, going to spend some of this money that's being sent to us for these kind of things. So this would improve the environment in that office building and, and help with maybe mitigating any of our, some of our concerns with this virus. And, and I know this would help with the allergies, like I said, with our employees.
So I know that the, I'm sorry, JP?
I just want to see the literature on this before we commit to $9,000 for something that, you know. I'd like somebody to, to, to. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's a legitimate request. I, I, I think that we were trying to maybe make this work with opening the building, but I'm not comfortable with spending this money till we have the funds that we're talking about spending. And so if, if everybody, you know, maybe should take a look at the literature and be comfortable with what we're doing here.
Sure, thank you.
Yep, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, just a reminder that our purchasing policy requires us to get bids, anything over $5,000 unless the person is, or the company is a preferred vendor.
Mary, Mary, does that apply to all funds or just tax money funds? Because since these are not funds that are generated by taxes, do they fall under that same purchasing policy?
It's the town's purchasing policy regardless of what funds we're using for it.
Okay. So that would mean we'd have to get at least one other price on it. Or put it out to bid.
Or consider a, a preferred vendor.
Yeah. Well, let's take a, let's take a look at the information. Let's get everybody comfortable with what we're doing and, and why we're doing it. And then we'll figure out how to proceed about actually getting them installed. So we'll get, we can go down that route. Get the first questions answered.
The, you all, all the board members now have the information.
Yeah, I saw it come through, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. So anything else on? Any other new business, under new business? And I think the old business items are staying where they are.
At this time, I don't think there's anything we need to act on right off, is there, Mary?
I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't hear you.
Um, I said, I don't think there's anything there that we need to act on
No.
right off. There's some things that we need to do, but at some point when, and but I don't see anything major there.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. So there's no other new business, no other old business? Is there any motion?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is made, is there a second? Is there a second to adjourn? Were we Charlie on the MTA? JP, are you still on?
He's not, he just, we just lost him.
Oh, he dropped again.
Uh-oh.
All right, well, we're not adjourned because we can't get a second on the motion.
Well. Well, then, since we can adjourn, I'll bring up some old business because I was going to do it under old business anyway. Just like to get an update, Mary, on, on the request that we had of the library for accurate information as to how many members we have and a list of who those members are.
I have not heard from them.
Okay, we need to follow up then or something? I just didn't want to let it drop. These things have a way of just like falling by the wayside. We need to either get it or, or get some kind of an answer from them as to when we're going to get it. But I'd like to see it followed up on.
Okay, Bill, could you send a reminder to? Oh, our two delegates, please, that this was information that was requested and when we might expect to see it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That being said, we have a motion on the floor that I'll second.
A motion to adjourn made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good night all and thank you.